Like the call to order the meeting of the Sunderland School Committee. As far as the Select Board and Finance Committee, do you guys have a quorum? Do you need to call those to order too?
Five for Dow is financial.
Okay.
Who's the chair?
I believe so.
Let's stand. Alright, um, let's see. We're gonna mix up the order a little bit. We have Bill here to talk to us about the oil tank options, I believe.
Yep.
So we're gonna move that to the front.
Has everybody got to read the report from time bomb?
I think I shared it a while back.
Okay. So, the report came back and it's really what I thought it was gonna be where they're, they're recommending to do the fiberglass tank underground. The only issue with that, or may, might be a good thing, is it's sixty weeks out right now, tanks are. So that's fourteen months, so it's over a year. Um, so that gives us time to figure things out from there. There were a couple of things under the tank and permitting stuff where they referenced the Sunderland Fire Department. And I believe that's the chief that has to, um, give out the permit for this, this job. And so I'm not quite positive when a good time to bring him in would be. Maybe it's now, I don't know if anybody has any.
What starts the sixty weeks clock ticking?
Okay. What's that?
What starts the sixty weeks clock?
Oh, well, it's.
When you come up with money or?
Yeah, we, we would have to get it funded and then it would have to go out the bid. And then once a contractor won the bid, they would order the tank, so.
And then sixty weeks from, from there.
From there, yeah, that's just what they're saying now. Um, that could get better, that could get worse, that could stay the same. Um, we're still waiting on a generator for a school that's over a year now.
So that's one of the things we talked about last meeting, which you weren't here for was, you know, Peter was kind of filling us in on the town's timeline, ARPA funds, those kinds of things. And we said, oh, we have time to wait. And Darius and I said, wait, if it's gonna take that long to get the product in.
Right.
We really don't have that time to wait because the longer we wait, the longer it takes to get.
You're adding a year on to whenever you pull the trigger. Correct. Yep.
So, that's why we're all meeting here together. Welcome to Select Board. Um, so I guess the question is, I guess I have two questions. What does you think the timeline on, is on approving the ARPA funds? And then two, is this going to be a town project or a school project? Meaning that sometimes in, as I'm working with other towns in the community, sometimes the town takes it on, they put out the bid and they oversee the project. Um, being outside of the actual building walls, sometimes it's, you know, example, kindly put a playground in, the town oversaw the project. You know, right now, we're doing a, a project outside of Deerfield Elementary, the front walkway, the town's taking that project where we're doing the floors inside the building. So it's just, who is the person overseeing it? Once the funds are secured, if that's about the bid, if we are taking care of it, we're gonna work through Furcog because the kind of bidding, we don't have in-house resources to do. Um, and moving that process forward, selecting the school committee with them being in charge, selecting the bid and so on and so forth, or town takes it, and this is something you guys can discuss and whatever, but that's one of those things we'll have to figure out is who's overseeing the project.
And I think when we did the playground here, it was a combo. Jeff, um, worked really closely with Ben and I on the playground bid here with Furcog did that out as well. Yeah, so that might be the route that you guys want to go as well, that it's.
That's not working very well. CPA. It's excellent. But. Um, no, it is probably.
So again, a decision, you know, when, if we secure funds or when we secure funds, we go positive, um, that kind of decision about how you want to do that.
Peter?
I mean, there's gotta be one governing body of it, though. I imagine someone has to, unless you do joint meetings to approve the bid. You know, that kind of thing, you're gonna have to have one governing body be the one, I mean, you're working together and that kind of stuff, but somebody's gotta be the one who's on I imagine legally on the hook for it.
Right. This is slightly different, but we have a cost estimate in the time bond report. Do we work with those numbers for terms of what we want to appropriate, or do we say, well, that really wasn't somebody? I mean, that, is that, is that, are those numbers valid for moving forward?
Yeah. Yeah. And so basically, we have to come up with an envelope number to then go out the bid. And they're gonna come in a little bit conservative because they don't want you to go out to bid and then all of a sudden be sticker shocked that it's, you know, a hundred thousand dollars more. I'm throwing, I'm throwing big numbers not to, you know, talk about the project itself, but um, you know, that's how we do, that's how we've done all the other bigger projects that we're working on now in the district is that you have to have to come up with a base number that again is usually conservative. Um, and then it goes out the bid and then we go for a little bid off that.
And there's probably gonna be some additional costs in there for creating bid specs. While we have the time bond report, we have to get full specs done for the bid process. I'm not sure if this requires engineering, but I imagine it does. So there might be some additional fees and timeline that we have to consider as well.
Then the question would be, do you need engineering done before you order the tank? Bill?
I, I really think that's, that's built into these contingencies in here. I, I do.
Say again?
But I would have, I think it's might be built into the contingencies in this pricing, but I, I would have to ask them that.
To do the design work and the.
Yeah, if that's included, you know, yeah. I know they, they said they would come and speak at one of these meetings, that, that's included, I know that.
But it's also, I mean, it's both a question of funds, but it's also a question of what sort of steps in the process we gotta go through before we put it out to bid. And do we have, it's one thing to say, well, you got the money in the thing for the engineering, but if you have to actually get some engineering done, you know, that's gotta be fit into the timeline and I'm assuming, I don't know anything about it for.
Yeah, that has to be done before we can even put it out to bid.
Right.
Those pieces have to be.
I mean, I'm just looking at the stuff that is sitting out there that's gotta happen before. You know, we can talk about going out to bid and then we're looking at sixty weeks or something like that. You know, if you think about wanting to get it in, not this summer, but next summer, you know, the, the wiggle room is narrowing.
Yeah.
And, you know, I particularly, I don't have any particular cares to, you know, who, who, who takes over all leadership in terms of running this project. I mean, I'd be quite happy to remember the school committee, but that's the Select Board, they get to. You guys have more experience in this stuff than a lot of what we do.
I was gonna, for the other.
So the way that we've worked it in a couple of the different projects is the Select Board of the town has signed the contract, accepted and signed the contract with the um, winning bidder, because it's town funding, it's not school committee money that we're spending. But then, working in collaboration with myself, the principal, whoever the architect is, to make sure that all of those, everything's taken care of that's supposed to be taken care of. So that's why I think I could end up being, um, a joint effort, which worked well for the playground.
Yeah.
You know, we all.
The way in the playground where it was sort of, uh, I, or the Select Board would sign and be thinking, change orders, whatever, and after it had been approved, the school did all the actual decision making and then all the finance stuff just came through our office, too. And I got the, you know, permitting rate report and stuff like that. So I'd be to split, do that.
Because some of it's gonna fall on their audit, like Jeff just mentioned, the prevailing wage, if they ever get audited on that piece, they've gotta have the documentation, not us. So it is gonna be a little bit of a. And we're seeing with some of the other large projects that we're doing, you know, the spec timeline and engineering process is what, four to six weeks at a minimum? And then bidding is another four-ish weeks from there. And then once you grant your contract, your timeline starts for the product. And I think we're okay with the pricing because it's, you know, once it's ordered, the price isn't gonna change unless there's change orders involved in the project. And, you know, we're not talking about bidding it six to eight months from now, I think. We're talking about bidding it in this, in the fall, possibly, if we can move that quickly.
We don't bid it till the fall. It's still sixty weeks. You're hard time putting it in next summer.
Yeah, I mean, but we're talking, it's mid-February.
Right.
I don't know how quickly the town's gonna secure the funding, but say we've got an eight-week timeline between specs, engineering and bidding, we're looking at March, April. Maybe we can get it out to bid in May or June.
I mean, it strikes me. You gotta be sort of open to try and do something like that, otherwise it's just like, okay, we've done, now we're looking at two and a half years. Right?
But once groundbreaking occurs, do we know how long the install process would be?
I don't.
Right, because it'd be a big disruption if it obviously.
That's all gonna depend on also if there's any contaminated soil, that's gonna make a big difference.
Well, a piece of machinery out there recess will be so easy to supervise all the kids, just be sitting at the fence watching it dig up the ground.
Good point.
Preschool, easy for recess. You wouldn't even use that playground again.
And so if that is the case, I do wonder if we push the habit after bid, if the funding is secured by the end of the school year, just so that sixty weeks brings us into the summer of the twenty-fourth.
We have to move pretty quickly to make that happen.
If it's full, sixty weeks from now.
Right. You were talking at the end of the school year, sixty weeks puts us at the end next summer, starting the project, unless they could have a turnaround.
Yeah.
Ten weeks. We're not gonna.
You got any idea how long the process would take once they?
The actual construction process? No, that's what Ben just asked, and I'm not positive how long that would take. I don't think it's gonna be super long. But I have that question written down to ask them tomorrow.
Okay, and I mean, I just sort of wanna feel like we walked out of here tonight, we've got maybe plan forward that is moving, getting, you know, moving.
So I, I think we could start some of the first steps. We can get in touch with Furcog and see what their availability is. We can get a quote on what the cost is to contract with them, which is probably less than a thousand dollars. Um, we can have Bill reach out to Time Bond to answer some of these questions and find out what the cost is to do specs and if we need additional engineering of any sort, because they should know that. And at least get that process started, get an estimated timeline for how long that will take, you know, and then maybe that gives the town a couple of weeks to determine the funding, if this is something that.
And it's the, it's, it's Time Bond the one that would, would do the engineering, or would that be some other party?
Uh, we could contract with them. If it's under thirty thousand dollars, we don't have to put it out to bid for engineers.
So we've got no, we ought to have no additional procurement hassle as far as dealing with the engineering part.
No, just more money.
Just what?
Just more money.
You know, it's got to be done, it's got to be done. I just wanna see this thing, you know, feel like the sentiment is moving rather than.
I hear, but I'm gonna have to go back to the town and say, when do you think the timeline of the money?
What are you guys thinking about? I mean, my sense is that there's been support on your board, so you can offer money for this, but.
So let's say August first is the, or absolute last, like get the product started, like just sometime we force kids come back with a little bit of leeway in there. That would mean that June first of this year would be our need to order the tank in order to get it here for August first of fall here. And so if you're saying it's gonna be eight weeks for the engineering and all that stuff, that brings us back to April first. So we would need to be able to commit secure bonding by April first. That's more time than I thought. But that, that thought is, I, I was thinking it was gonna be like March first, um, but that's. Two months, we'll figure it out. Um, there were definitely, uh, discussion on the board about using ARPA funds for that. I think it's a, a, a very valuable option for that. And as Peter and Elizabeth were on the capital spending, trying to figure out how to fund a whole bunch of things, is being one of the bigger ones, but not deal any dangers. There's not even a million dollars worth of capital if that's. Um, but given the timeline on this, like refinishing the floors in the pushed off by a couple of months, we're not talking about having in the back of the school digging up the grounds. I would be certainly on board with making this a, a, the ARPA request for, to get the money secured back. There isn't really anything else on our docket where if you don't order it now, we're waiting extra year for deeper school. And obviously, we'll have to discuss that in the board.
What is the spending deadline for ARPA funds?
They commit by the end of twenty-four.
Okay.
And then I think it's eighteen months after that. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have some time still on that.
Great.
That being said, people in Washington are talking about emergency funds and the emergency's over. So yeah, let's find that. What are you doing? We're gonna take it back. So um, there's talk.
Certainly.
At least they were.
They, they can make sense to, if we're gonna spend the money, spend it sooner than later. So.
Then I'm, I'm also like, you know, the one of the duties of the ARPA thing is when you decide to do something, it just takes your board to approve it and it's a, can be a quick process. And in this case, if, you know, based on your timeline, it's like, well, we don't, we wouldn't need to approve it till the first of April, but like, you know, it seems to me like in this thing, the more things you keep getting done, because they're not right up against the deadline, the sort of smarter you're being with this fight. People are gonna think more.
And this is also taking sixty weeks as an actual delivery time as opposed to.
The best guess we have right now.
Because as far as all the chance that sixty, we're sixty, sixty turns into six, five or seven weeks.
Right.
At the end. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Till, till March.
Yeah, right.
Dude, can we put that on the, the agenda for not feeding that, the, discussing ARPA funds for that?
Yeah.
For the.
Okay.
Reasons.
So then whatever you got on your plate for, you'll compose needs to.
Yep.
Get in the gear.
Yep.
Right?
Can you move pretty quickly? Tennis courts already out to bid. Frontier just approved it, like, a week ago.
Yeah.
So, what happens if the oil tank fails between now and two years from now?
We have a joint, we have a joint meeting to discuss what we're gonna do.
I, I guess my point is that's still an issue, right? It's still, we're not, we're solving, if you're two years down the line, but we still have low durability with the.
There's, there's non-zero risk. We're better equipped to know if we are.
Because you guys, uh, were able to put the, uh,
Tank monitor.
The, the monitor on it makes, you know, lets us know if there's a change in pressure due to leak, we'll know when a leak happens rather when it's happening instead of six months later when we have an environmental issue. So.
Well, I saw you undermining and, uh, going over the document, anything else?
Um, there were some things in here about the, I think I said it, but the there's no money put aside in this project so far for contaminated soil. I don't know, I guess, I don't know, you could make your contingency higher, I don't, you know what I mean? I don't know how else you would do that. Um, and then it says something in here about local and state permitting, but I think, I think I need to reach out to the fire chief, maybe, and have a conversation here in Sunderland.
Sure, you had asked about engineering as well, because there's also a line in there about that's not obtained site survey plans prior to conducting any engineering design or commencement of construction up to you. So does that fall on them or us?
Um, I, it'll probably part of, be part of the spec building process. Yeah.
I can ask that question, too.
Because we had to have all that done before the track went out to bid, before the tennis courts went out to bid, they came out and did all that work. That's, that would be part of, typically part of the fee we're paying for the specs to be designed.
Thank you.
Yeah. We'll do some legwork.
You guys got any more questions for Bill? Here before we move on, probably?
Oh, he answered most of our questions about this when, when he met us the last time. If you have anything to move to.
Yeah, I mean, just keep good communication on this, because, I mean, that was the key, that's. Good communication. But, nice though.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, you're leaving? I thought you were gonna do the budget presentation.
Oh, that's right. My, my throat is giving up.
Yeah.
Tonight, I think, um. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Bill.
Alright, so the budget is next on the agenda, but I want to make a quick announcement. Uh, coming up, neither Keith nor I are planning on seeking reelection, so uh, there will be two seats available on school committee. And if anyone's interested, uh, the town caucus, uh, was March six-six. Yep. You show up and people will not meet you, uh, necessarily great people if you like, and it's fairly easy to sign up if you're interested in, uh, in a seat on school committee, which has been a real privilege and something that I've enjoyed a lot.
It's been, it's been a privilege and I've learned off, too.
How many years have you guys been on?
Nine.
It's all good.
You guys came on, you?
Their term?
I think so.
Hmm.
Curious, I can say his name, Queen, but it's all virtue folks later.
People weren't very excited.
Exactly.
Um, and there's just something that it's just been rolling around my head, it's more from the frontier, um, the um, oilers going in, there was like a, a letter about thinking forward about how we're gonna be heating and looking for more green options. So this is something that, as this building ages and like going forward, so this is gonna be a replacement that's not necessarily like a really green option, probably more efficient, be better, but so like now is the time to start thinking about like long-term about like critical needs within the town and then how can that be changed going forward? And it's gonna have, it can't just be, because I feel like on Frontier, it's, the decision was made, now there's voices saying, oh, you should think about this. It's not gonna be just the school committee that is gonna be able to think about green options, nor looks like it's gonna have to be like all town agencies working together to think about how to move forward on critical, um, town buildings. So this is the long-term plug.
Thank you. Alright. This is your twenty-four budget.
Okay, let's get into it again. Um, Megan, there is a paper copy here, if you don't, if you want one, we can take them back.
Oh, yeah.
I did send this to you, Jeff, electronically. Did you share it? Okay. Um, so much of the narrative looks exactly like school committee had already seen last month, because the way that we left that meeting was that we wanted to talk with Select Board about what the starting point of the budget was, because there are some important pieces included in here that are contributing to our significant increase. Um, so I'm not gonna do as lengthy of a presentation, but I thought since we have guests and I know we have quite a few people, um, watching us, so I thought I'd go over a couple of the points here. Um, and then we can talk about, um, next steps from there. So, uh, the first draft of the budget was presented at a six-point-six-three percent increase, uh, roughly two-hundred-and-ten-thousand over the prior year. Uh, this is a significant number, uh, because outside of one position that was a new initiative this year, the rest of the increase is level funding. So existing staffing was replicated, existing services was replicated, um, with the exception of some increase for facilities needs. Uh, so the starting point, uh, is always to uh, consider what our contractual and non-contractual wage adjustments are, um, and factor in what our salary obligations are to begin with. So for FY twenty-four, we're looking at an increase of a hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand dollars just in wages, which is almost four percent. It's right around a four percent increase as the first starting point of our budget. That is due to teacher and IA contract negotiations, as well as, uh, COLA built in for school-based staff and central office staff. Um, the COLA and the teacher and the IA contract are both at two percent this year, but anyone that is stepping will receive an additional three-point-one-nine. So if you're stepping, you're getting five-point-one-nine percent. Um, if there's any column movement, someone advances their degree, that increases that amount. Um, so the teacher and the IA portion on the budget increases pretty significant. Um, and it's hard to start a budget with a four percent increase before you've done any other work on it. But this is the reality of where Sunderland is at this year. Oh, you have a thing. Perfect. Excuse me. Um, so after we look at the wage increases, I then go back and look at a three-year history of actual expenditures from all of our non-salary accounts and then also take into consideration needs from um, directors of other departments. So, uh, facilities, IT, special education, obviously Ben has input as well. Uh, and we are showing a thirty-four-thousand-dollar increase to non-salary expenditures. That is, again, not for any new initiatives, that is just to right-side our budget. So our accounts have been over the last several years, particularly facilities-related. So, um, custodial wages for overtime and summer help, uh, we've gone over in that line. Our trash account has been over, they keep increasing trash rates. We all know inflation for supplies and materials. Um, I don't have to tell anyone in this room how badly we need an increase in our general repair line. So that was about fourteen thousand. We had another ten thousand increase in building heat. Several years, we have been over budget on those. Um, and then some other minor changes in, in account lines. And while I'm saying we're right-siding the budget, uh, there might be the question of how have we paid for this in the past if we've been over for several years? Uh, sometimes we can take from other line items, for example, if we don't fully fund the substitute line, because we didn't need as many substitutes, or Ben was creative with his staffing. Uh, we can move money around to cover those overages. But we're at a point after multiple years of being in deficit in those lines where we really should consider at a minimum for the facility's needs, increasing those lines so that we can really take care of our building. Uh, after that, we look at, uh, special education drivers. So we look at, uh, out-of-district placements for students who were placing in another school because we can't meet their needs. We also look at specialized transportation, and that is for students who are coming to Sunderland, but also students who are going out of district. We're actually seeing a decrease in specialized transportation because of some changing in some routes. So we've taken that ten thousand dollar, uh, decrease out of the budget. There is some risk in this, because next year, who knows what's gonna happen for transportation needs. So if we were in a, in a budget year that we're much healthier and we weren't starting off with four and five percent increase just for those minor things I already mentioned, I probably wouldn't change this number because it's something that fluctuates and we really should keep it in as a buffer. But given we need to save some money somewhere, it felt fiscally responsible to pull that money out at this point, um, and save that ten thousand dollars. So from there, we look at revolving funds. Uh, we look at revolving funds and grant revenues, so school choice, early childhood revolving. Um, if we had a special education revolving fund, if we were bringing in a tuitioned-in student, we would look at those expenses. Grants include, um, IDEA, Title One, excuse me, Circuit Breaker. We make sure that the expenses we paid from prior years can be funded in the next fiscal year. We're gonna talk particularly about school choice, because I think that's on everybody's mind since our last meeting, and it is something that the town has worked with us on to make sure that we good, build, build up good, uh, choice reserves. But technically, in this budget, there's no negative impact from grant or revolving funds. Last step of our process is to look at new initiatives. Um, and I know Ben sent out a document to school committee today talking about this position, and it's something that you all wanted to consider as part of our ask and dive into a little bit deeper, so I will defer to him for that piece. But to talk about the financials, um, we did ask for the addition of one new, uh, position that would fall to the teacher contract for a school adjustment counselor to provide increased mental health support for students, um, as well as support for families and staff. That is roughly a sixty thousand dollar increase, which is almost two percent. So if you're doing the math, following along, started at four, went up to five. Um, now, you know, we're, we're over six, so um, six-point-six-three is the draft with all of those pieces taken into consideration. I know I just talked really quickly, because we did go over this in in much more detail last month. Um, so I'll pause there to see if there's any questions before we keep going, or if I missed anything.
Yeah.
The sixty thousand dollars, that the, this could be the salary, not including the.
Correct. Yep. Yep. You're preaching my song, that's what I say all the time. It's not just benefits, I mean, it's not just wages. It's tough when you add wages in because you're talking what, another ten, fifteen thousand potentially? Yeah. Okay. Um, I gave you some charts in here to look at this time because I feel like I've given you so much data points and other presentations that it kind of gets lost, but the points that I wanted to make here, it's that it's really clear to see um, when you're looking at all expenditures, the majority of the budget, the total budget, the majority of it is going directly to educating our students. So that education and leadership, that is anyone who falls under a teaching position, IA's principal, the other school staff, that's about eighty percent of our budget there. And then when you look at the wages, uh, you can see that about eighty percent is just educational staff, so directly teaching students. Enrollment is uh something that we touched on briefly at the last meeting, but I do think we should talk about it as part of this narrative so we can see the whole picture. Uh, it's really clear here that our numbers have gone down. Um, some of that natural from pandemic, we knew why families were making other choices at those times. Uh, we would expect this number to be starting to go back up at this point. However, we're not seeing the data that shows that. Um, so our school is significantly smaller than it was pre-pandemic. Um, what does that mean as far as budget impact? Well, now we're talking about, um, it's really great that our classes are very small and that our students are getting a lot of individual and one-to-one attention that they need and deserve. And when we're talking about a six percent budget, if we're not talking about enrollment and staffing, we're not doing justice to the process. Um, and really should be talking about what class sizes look like. What's the impact? Do we have anyone retiring, which we know um, we don't this year in Sunderland, but those are the kind of conversations we don't talk about regularly, but this feels like it's an important part of our story this year. Again, we can come back to this and, and do you have a question now?
I think Jeff had a question.
Okay.
Um, just a clarification because we've been talking about insurance as well and the general fund expenditure by category. Yeah. One point three percent spent on benefits, new shares, that's for the share position.
That's for central office.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Great question. Yes, that does not cover expenses that the town pays for school employees.
I got a question about the, the enrollment data. The hundred forty-seven that you have for the dated, is that just residence or is that school choice?
It's residence.
Okay, and we're expecting somewhere in the vicinity of forty-ish school choice?
Yeah.
So similar numbers to, to two thousand twenty-two?
No, that has to be.
No, that's not, I think I have a typo there.
Does not include pre-K. One forty-seven includes school choice, but does not include.
Okay, it does include school choice.
Right.
You have two sections full of thirty slots, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and currently twelve that are signed up or, or just getting dispatched up. Is that a normal position to be in this time of year that has that many slots open or is that more slots open than?
It's a great question.
Yeah, and at this time of year, there's, it's usually a more, more side-offs. We anticipate enrollment. Um, we have twelve known enrollment uh pre-katers for next year. Um, four identified, four additional students identified through earlier intervention that will be joining us at some point through the year. Um, that would bring us up to sixteen and eight of those sixteen students would uh be on IEPs. So just about half. Um, or yeah, half and um two, two of the sixteen English order students as well.
And what happens if we end up with only sixteen students? Do we end up doing one section? Do we end up still doing two sections of each, each of them?
So um, you know, numbers only tell part of the story, right? And some of it is based on need. Of those sixteen students, not all would necessarily be coming full day every day. And so that's something that we would have to figure out with the families um and our director of early childhood education.
But that is definitely part of the conversation right now that, that we're having is how do we handle pre-K if we don't hit that eighteen open spot? You know, could we get eighteen more applications?
So a, as a, so in addition to those um current for early interventions, projected referrals, we as of January twenty-sixth, we've received an additional five uh community applications. So that would bring the total, if everyone ended up coming, that would bring the total up to twenty-one.
So while we're talking about preschool um and enrollment numbers, let's talk a little bit about the revolving fund because that is another piece of the puzzle here. Um, that data is on page seven there, if you want to scroll down to that. Um, so we've been fortunate, even though we did suffer a little bit during the pandemic with families not enrolling in early childhood. Um, we were able to supplement salaries and wages, as you remember, with some S R funding. So we didn't have to cut any staff. Um, we were able to maintain programming. So we've been fortunate to build up that revolving fund so that we have about a seventy-five thousand dollar cushion and starting of the year balance. Um, the numbers currently are based on full classrooms. So while Nathaniel's asking these pointed questions, if we don't fill them, we're not going to have the revenue that we need to cover the expenditures that are planned. So that seventy-five thousand dollars that we have as reserves could quickly get eaten up if we did maintain two sections without being full for enrollment. Um, so again, a bit of a risk here uh with this fund and it's too early for us to make decisions. We don't have, you know, the community's not fully prepared to be applying. People aren't making those decisions necessarily at this point. Um, and we may not be ready to make that decision before the budget has to be ready to go to town meeting. So um, this is one of the challenges. And I said in that beginning narrative, there's no impact currently from revolving funds, but this could be uh something that we have to continue conversations about and could have future budget impacts for us moving forward.
Would we say to say that either we get more enrollments, we do two sections and the budget projections are fairly accurate, or we don't get much enrollment, we have to do one section and then the savings of the additional staff through second section offset the reduced income from the employee.
Um, in an ideal world, yes, that would be how it works, but it's never that simple. Um, you know, as Ben has said, that it's not just the numbers, they don't tell the whole story. So needs of the student, um, how much, you know, uh, special education services we have to provide. Um, but those are the conversations that we're having as a school committee and particularly in our, you know, principal superintendent, business manager meetings. And they're hard decisions and um, none are being made lightly.
And I, I do want to add that we've been very active in getting the word out about regarding the opening, openings in preschool. Um, we've sent the advertisement to two newspapers. We've posted in a couple of different Facebook group, groups, um, set up some advertisements around town, including the town library. There is a weekly playgroup that meets here in Sunderland. Uh, obviously we put the word out there and that same playground, uh, playgroup um, is in a couple of other spots as well, the town library and the space in Deerfield. So we've really been trying to get the word out.
Can I just clarify the numbers again? Because I'm looking at twelve known anticipated leaving eighteen spots for two classrooms, five applications received. That's seventeen, but then you're saying there's four more that have been identified of those applications that goes us to twenty-one? So we're looking at nine spots.
We have a total of um eight returning students, four of which are on IEPs. We have four additional early intervention referrals to bring us up to a total of twelve. Then we've had an additional five applications to bring us to seven. Seventeen. Did I, did I mess up, mess up the numbers there? Yeah, seventeen.
Yeah, I think the confusion was with the four, four early intervention, they're part of the twelve already.
Oh, those twelve, eight would be on IEPs.
So we're, then so further down, it's just anticipated that there will be eighteen openings, so we're looking at thirteen now.
Yeah, I was just making the point that there's five applications, we haven't accepted those students.
They may have applied to multiple places.
Right. Exactly. So there's technically eighteen. Yep.
And then eighteen would be two, two, two sections is fifteen, two sections is thirty-four.
What's the typical ratio by the, by the student?
Um, around half.
It is obviously around half, so this is nothing.
Yeah, and, and it's, I mean, it, it changes from one year to the next.
Right, but it typically happens what you would expect, so it's not out of the ordinary, even though first you're stating current.
Correct, yeah.
And then historically, aren't there always, isn't there always like a little bump in the summer with families moving in that we have to plan that there's?
Yeah, we, we've seen that in both pre-K and K for sure.
But just because it may not be on the top of mind, it's like where there's the um preschool students who are on IEPs don't pay tuition. And so as that, if it's always around half, but our total number is less, but it's still half, our rate is our guy. So it's, I just kind of, you know.
What's, what's an ideal class size? I mean, I, I know an ideal class size for our teacher project might be different from a physical parent, but, but I know I've seen, you know, for secondary, for example, we have nineteen-year-old, we use two classes, ten students more than I know is that. That's people's way of going about those, nice but very small class size.
Right, and so with those numbers, so it all depends. Okay, so it depends on the makeup of the class, the number of students in IEPs and the high, and demands of those students and also grade level. As you get, students get older, you could have, um, from an administrative perspective, you get more students in a class given, you know, what are the demands of that class in the sense of whether, you know, their high behavioral needs and that kind of, you know, other IP needs where uh we need more adult supervision or um help in the classroom. So that depends, but um nineteen, you know, some of these numbers have, I just want people also to know that the numbers have trickled. We didn't start at nineteen, so during the pandemic, we didn't really know what our numbers are. Coming out of the pandemic, we had larger numbers and now um, many people are either leaving the district for multiple reasons. If they're moving out of the district, doing other options. Um, and we're seeing it across the board, not just in one class, but we're losing a few in each class. So these healthy numbers are now turning into, like you say, two classes for nineteen is below what we would want to see ideally. We'd like to see probably in a second grade classroom, you know, fourteen to sixteen, I would say. And depending on the needs, again, if these are generous, general needs, um, you know, um, I mean, obviously there'd be IEP students, but you know, you know, they can handle with the, the two-person group there. Um, and then as you get into the upper grades, um, you're looking at, you know, between, again, these are kind of just pushing general numbers out there, but you know, between sixteen and twenty um, in those upper grades, you can go even higher um if the, the needs of the classroom are being met. And that's what we've seen, you know, whatever, you go to an inner-city school or with, you know, if I, you can have thirty in a classroom. You know, so it's, you know, it's depending on where you are, what the, um, with the ranges in your area of what you're servicing, that's what other area elementary schools look like around us.
I'm just looking at the enrollment numbers and even with like a you have to end up getting about more students, so you end up getting twenty-five, something like that. We're still looking at some potential decrease in enrollment from that. Hundred and eighty total last year, or two thousand twenty-two for last year, and even here. And even with fifteen students, um, we're still looking at maybe at a hundred and sixty-two. So, you know, that's a whole classroom right there that we've lost student-wise. Which means that our per student dollars is going up dramatically. And I certainly don't want to make huge class sizes, but also, you know, if we're talking about a six point six percent increase and, and, and just for context, the amount that we're asking for is pretty much the entire two and a half percent of the pandemic. Which is going to be hard because it's whatever else is asking for, a lot more money. Yeah, if the fire department came to us and said anything, we're firing, that would have doubled the cost of last year. Um, it's everyone's, yeah. Jack and prices of all of those. So I guess the question would be, can we get away with making a single second grade class? Can we do three, third, fourth boxes, something like that? Is there a way for us to be able to move these numbers around a little bit and find the one for the extra position without that being increased at school? Um, I love the idea of having the position, especially in the pandemic, when kids are having the roughest time they will probably ever have in the next two, twenty years, hopefully. But again, you know, at this point, we're, we're, we're just getting down a lot of pretty nasty budgets on all of this. Um, so just like to get that out there, is there a way for us to, to do some, some interesting things with class sizes and whatnot? I mean, nineteen seems like a lot, but I also have thirty-two in my stuff. So it's not a huge, very, I mean, a six grade, so um, it's not twenty-nine.
Those are the hard questions we're trying to come up with answers to right now.
Right, can we make reductions to make budgets smaller? That's always an op, that's an option within the budget. And then I think with this, the reason, one of the reasons here for the, of many of the conversations is understanding where the town's finances are. Understanding where, where we are and what we're asking for and you share what the two and a half override is, is a number we need to know. And I think it's part of the data gathering, we're getting as to where, where that number has to come. You know, where it has to, you know, where the the recommendation from the, well, the budget that the school committee puts forward, um, you know, does it work within what the town's going to be looking for, is it going to be at odds with the town? You know, because they can come up with whatever budget number they want. Um, but you know, it goes, you know, as you understand, it goes to the town, that kind of thing, but if it doesn't work well, it's going to be not a position we want to put ourselves in or, or the town if that matters. So that's part of this conversation, so I.
You put out a number, have you got a number for frontier, Brooklyn by the town yet? What do you figure I'm having there?
When the governor releases her budget.
March seventh.
No, no, no. And I'm assuming that something similar has gone on with tech school as far as I would, my people are doing. Same sort of.
Yeah. Tech school has gone up a hundred students in the last five years, so I imagine that you're, I don't know how many I can go through, I mean, you're sending, I think there's another applicant this year.
I think there's three more from last year.
Three more in the last year, alright. So then there's, there never is going to go up as well.
We're all going to come out of the same big pot, right? Yeah, I appreciate the conversation, I appreciate the, understand, I want to flesh out the position a little bit more, uh, because it seems like the kind of thing that would be really easy to just eliminate that additional position. Uh, but, and if we end up there, we end up there, but uh it's important enough to understand what the needs are, that uh, I don't know, Ben, if you want to say a few words.
Yeah, and so I, I had outlined a lot of the, the talking points on this at, at our last meeting. Um, I, I guess the only thing I would add to that is, um, you know, when, when meeting with my uh in-house instructional leadership team and um, you know, we, we look at anything and everything, right? To um, school events, uh, school culture, um, academics, so on and so forth. And we held a long discussion about uh social emotional wellness and health of our students. And we started it, we did an exercise around the multi-tiered system of supports, which touches on academic, behavioral and social emotional support of, of students. And we identified the um current resources we had in place. And then also looked at where we were um, needed additional support. And that's kind of where the school adjustment counselor position came in. Um, this position would, um, and actually, so back to another step is um, we would have an opportunity with this position to bring in a, a screener um, that would be um administered in all classrooms across all grade levels and uh identify the students' needs and. And uh, identify the students' needs in eight different competency areas. And the school adjustment counselor will oversee this, they would help to provide tier one instruction, tier one instruction. Um, alongside classroom teachers. They would also additionally um, be pulling kids um, in tier two who need a higher level. Of support and intervention that wouldn't be taking place, or in addition to what is taking place in in the classrooms. Um, they would be working closely with classroom teachers, our special education team, partnering with families. Um, and as uh, Nathaniel just just mentioned, that um. Coming out of the pandemic and the social emotional needs of the students. You know, that's, it's really a a uh, priority and something that we've identified. Um, and I and but I think like, in regards to that position, or. Any other staffing positions, like the this, the school, the school committee really needs a a solid idea as to. What number we should be coming in at, right, because that 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 changes the conversation. Yeah, um, and uh, yeah, so any questions in particular about that position?
Would it be fair to say that it wouldn't, this this position wouldn't only be supporting students, but it would be um, reducing some of the pressures on the other staff? I've been looking at our, you know, trends of staff attrition over the last two years, and if this would also help us. Make our staff feel supported, that would be significant as well.
I I I'd say so, um, and you know, the the pandemic was interesting, and prior to, prior to the pandemic. The only faculty turnover we had was with retirements and or moving out of the state. Um, and and since then, um, we've seen more turnover. We have an incredibly hardworking, talented, um, and dedicated team right now, and um. They are, they're moving mountains in terms of um, keeping our schools, school culture strong, supporting our students with with. With love and empathy, and this would just be another way to um, provide the students with a um. A really solid experience here at the school. Especially for those who need it most.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm a soapbox, really quick, uh. Maybe, and and correct me if I'm if I'm wrong here, you know, it seems like in the old days, the uh. Special education model was, well, there are some students who are special, and some students that are typical and never the twain shall meet. And uh, currently, there's this understanding that uh, there's a whole range of. Maybe an academic issue that goes untreated, eventually becomes a behavioral, like, attention issue. So that uh, I always think of the education uh, as an investment, not an expense, right? And this is a way of getting more free investment by addressing small issues while they're still small. Having someone who's looking around, able to screen and detect things uh, while they're still formative and and bring. That experience to bear uh, and support the teachers, uh, and so provide services up and down, uh. I think probably would have benefited all three of my girls who went through the school to have this position for them. So, like to echo uh, the thing with comments, I'm interested in creative ways we can. Uh, still support this position, understanding that it may or may not be possible.
To piggyback on that, saying that education is an investment, it's particularly true at the preschool level, when we talk about, you know, what if we had just one giant preschool? Um, those kids who are going to be in preschool next year have spent. Much of their early lives in isolation because of the pandemic, they're in general behind where they typically would be. So having an overcrowded preschool classroom um, would be the opposite of an investment in those kids. They they are the ones most at need of a really strong program with lots of personal attention.
Right, and and that carries on to students in the early grades now, in in the formative years and K one and two. Where um, they they just missed out on on so much, and for for some of our kindergarteners. Who's who was coming in, their first experience in um. Being around other students consistently their age was the first day of school for them.
I mean, in an ideal world, we've got a lot of money to work with, in an ideal world, maybe able to raise. Tax is more two and a half percent without having to get everyone in town to redo it, in an ideal world, the. State government would have been, not not one that this is a a real break on towns, and that the pandemic was hard, and they would have. Passed something as last year, they would give more money to the town, does not stop rather than getting a refund everybody, um. And then they, you know, I would love to find a way to support the the school decision, um. We just have to figure out how to make that work.
Related to state funding, um, since our last meeting, I've spoken with both uh, Joe Comerford and Natalie Blay about the um, the rural aid line. There was a, anybody who doesn't know, there was a rural schools commission um, last year, and they released their findings, and one of them was. Uh, a recommendation of increasing the rural aid, um, I think it's from six million to sixty-one million. Um, and so we're waiting on the governor's budget to see if she's going to fund that recommendation. That could have a meaningful impact here, right, Shelley?
Oh, yeah.
If that was fully funded.
Yeah. I think they said the average was eighty-five thousand per school. Is that what it was in that report?
Uh, from the past ones, yeah.
Yeah.
But the problem, the problem is putting a position on that is that you're depending on funding, it's gonna be fluctuating. And maybe to make the difference in your year. But yes, there could be some relief there, I mean, last year the funding was four million on six, but. So maybe they'll increase to six, you know, I don't dare, I. I don't, I don't see the politics to give rural schools that much money. But, you know, that kind of thing, we also, I went to a meeting with the superintendents regarding the millionaire's tax. Don't hold your breath on that.
Right, that's gonna go to higher ed more than K twelve.
It has to be divided between us and higher ed, it's gonna be us and the bridges, it's gonna be us and whatever. And um, it's gonna go to higher need schools before it's gonna go to ours. So don't be holding your breath on that, that money coming toward us. Maybe we'll get some trickle down, hopefully, hopefully we'll get some trickle down with that, but, um. There will be some funds there, you know, that could offset some other things within the budget, um. From rural, I mean, I imagine we'll get the at least what we got last year.
We went down this year compared to twenty-two though.
Right.
Sunderland is rated for, which is so strange, because at one point Sunderland was the only one getting rural aid. But now that they've changed the criteria, Sunderland isn't even the highest tier, Conway, Deerfield and Frontier. I think Waitley's in the highest tier also, I think Sunderland's down a tier, so we lost three thousand dollars on our rural aid disbursement this year.
Okay.
Compared to last year, so, you know, like Darius is saying, there's some, again, some risk, I feel like I'm repeating myself. Um, twelve thousand five hundred.
So.
So, you know.
So, if you proportionally, right, if they proportionally, if they double it, which means they put it to eight million. Will it double in the same measurement, but that would only deal us twenty thousand dollars, it's round out twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
You know, not enough to cover the position.
Yeah.
Will be helpful.
What's some of the uh. Calendar you think you guys are gonna have to work in on in terms of putting the whole package, take it to the town?
I think. You guys are fifty percent of budgets, not much we can do until we know where where the schools go in.
Right, but you also don't know cherry seed numbers until beginning of March, uh.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, we're putting expenses in now, um, but yeah, we're not. You know, March first, when the governor releases her budget, we'll uh, or shortly thereafter, we'll at least have an idea.
And the town's finance in general, you got a free cash number?
Um, I was talking with them last night, they. They had some questions about some CPA accounts that we were able to wrap up, they said that was the last thing, they need to run the reports, the reports look good. Then we could split free cash, it counts on it today, so.
I just keep asking, that's all.
I mean, for 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 big picture context, um. I think it's almost a core conclusion that in in some respect or another, we're already going to the town and asking for some kind of override, whether it's an exclusion, or whether it's a capital. Override for capital projects, or whether it's an override for the overall budget, there's, there's gonna be an ask, I don't think we're ever gonna get out this year without. Two hundred thousand dollars is not gonna cover everything that's been happening this year, it's just not, so it's gonna be an override. Um, what that pick-up format takes, whether we're able to fund the school as you asked, and we will ask for money for other hotels. Or whether it's tied in, that's all stuff that we're having to negotiate and talk about over the next few months. Um, and I think a big part of what this ask is gonna come down to is whether or not we can convince the town. Not necessarily for this, but whether we convince the town of what we're asking for, and if we can get the overrides passed, if we can get whatever we're asking for. We'd be in a position to probably be able to make these, make this work, um, if the town comes back and go with everything. I mean, ju- just the 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 bottom line, just the the, you know, contract and staff increases. Is basically school's portion of what we have to work with if we don't get more money, and so. That's just hard, and I especially because even just being able to tell the maintenance department, sorry, no money for you, is gonna be real hard to do. Um, but unfortunately, if 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 it came down to us saying yes to more money for the town, if proper two and a half didn't exist. The competition would be happening right now, um, but. The picture that we have all around is, everybody's out there paying a dozen, a a dozen for eggs. And everybody's complaining about money, nobody's seeing ten percent increases in the pay, and people in town would have had. It's gonna be uphill, but it's every, every time we ask for override, it's uphill better. And most of the people here have knocked doors for one before, uh, and and know that, but. You know, a- and and one of the big questions we've been going back and forth is, how big do we make asks? If we ask for what we actually need and end up having that be a a. Nobody can get past because it costs me virtually a dollar from a family that can't afford it, um, we ask for not enough, and still maybe get chopped down or. You know. This was not a great budget season, we just started this. But, you know, the other side of it is that one of the things I want to serve on, like, is do parts, I understand how hard it is to fund. And, you know, I had this like optimistic dream that I would come in, I would find fat in the budget that I could cut, and I'd find things, and. One of the findings is that the fat was cut twenty years ago, and then the muscle was cut five years ago, and. So grass happened last year, we're in a position here, you know. If a pandemic hadn't happened, we might be in a position where. Our our town's budget has been so tight for so long, that it wasn't capable of withstanding. The pressure of something like a pandemic without finding ourselves in a position where where the dollar short will need to be for this year. Ish, on a evening going on this. That's a question. Feel free to email your state representatives and things that are gonna be discussed, uh, everyone, anyone who. Didn't make professional, then we'll definitely help. Just context wise, I would love to give you everything you're asking for, I would probably have to do best to make everything that you're asking for happen. But I would be neat to say, hey, this is gonna necessarily happen that way, you know, a whole lot of freedom, I answered, yeah. All of it, you guys and us and the apples and all that, so. Yeah.
That, that's actually really helpful to at least have that as a context and understand, um. That you, that we're probably going in with some kind of ask, because then it becomes a question of managing it, and and like you said, balancing. The twin regrets of of having asked for too much and not getting it, or having asked for too little and getting it, uh.
And there's always the, if it does fail, if you ask yourself, oh, we'd ask for fifty thousand less than they asked, and you'll know. If you go after nothing, they'll come to go. So, I mean, I I I think the good news is, nothing we're going to ask for, from you guys, from other departments, from capital projects is. We're not asking for, hey, we want to like, you know, do some beautification downtown or something like that, that's gonna be. Nice, but not necessary, we're talking about like an ambulance, and, you know, keep the, the school. And projects that are are, I I would hope that 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 a- adult people in town will look at and say, okay, yeah, we can't go without. And I I have, I have a strong feeling that that would come to have meetings, we will likely get. So yes, I mostly worked it out when we went to town, in general, you know, valid, you know. Regular person who had paid your attention, the whole process goes in, they don't read the whole thing, they look at it, they look at the thing, they see how much the cost of it in there. In their taxes, and they go, no, go, so.
Wasn't it the bill, I heard it said months or something, anytime you ask for two and a half percent override, you're gonna, oh, right, we're gonna get an automatic three hundred people that both know. You can go expecting that.
So you have to find three hundred people who go, yes, you know, and so I I guess. You guys are sitting there thinking, what can you do to get better, you're likely gonna have some door knocking issues that we're gonna have to hit off this brain. Um, in order to get around to department complexes, get around to go to soccer games and and talk to all the families that are there, be like, hey, you like these feelings? Like having their kids at the services, well, show them the books, um, because you're right, we we. If we do nothing, we have a hundred people who go, yes, and three people go, no.
So, looking at the timeline. Because you guys had an early town meeting. Alright, so, we have to have a public hearing on the budget. Um, right now, it's scheduled in our calendar for March fourteenth. It's a month and a week away. Um, I imagine. You guys are gonna, you're saying you need our school budgets. We take one step back, create information thing, we expect the governor's budget by March first, or during that week of March first, right? Frontier will also know its assessments on the week of March first, and is expecting to have two meetings the following week on March seventh and eighth. I'm just kinda saying all this, so then we'll, you'll have the information, we'll have all the information for what the costs of the schools are going into the public hearing on the fourteenth, but. We won't have a meeting prior to the public hearing, we're gonna need to put another meeting on the books, because we don't have. Doesn't sound like we're making any decisions tonight for a budget to be moved towards the public hearing, in that. I mean, our next conversation is gonna be like, what, what is the administration charters to do next, but, also while you're here, just wanna kinda say what the timeline is out loud. Because I imagine you need our budget, we were saying, since we're saying your budget, you need our budget pretty darn early, or at least an estimate. So that you can plan off that, yeah, it kinda helps, right?
I mean, I gotta put a zero in.
We could.
That would definitely make target.
We've done that before, FYI.
Uh, the last Friday.
So, fair, we either need to schedule another school committee meeting, or we need to commit to handling this out. Super quick, because we got a lot of other items on the agenda, and thank you everyone for hanging out.
The agenda is pretty slim outside of this, to be honest with you, um, so, don't get, I mean, probably could do in ten minutes a reasonable amount of specials, but. The um, but you really, we can't do the budget tonight, you're gonna, you know, I think you're.
Sounds, possible elimination.
Right, and and that, the date on the fourteenth is in set and stone, it will be pre-count, you know, I haven't. Um, one of the things on my agenda from the C E is to set up when the public hearing is, because I gotta get that in.
Yeah, yeah.
I need two weeks in advance, plus a few days for approving of the newspaper, so, um. So, you know, we could do a. I'm trying to figure, it's, the dates are getting full in March, but the, you know, we could do a date in March and not have the public hearing until something like the twenty-eighth. Um, but once you have your budget earlier, usually it doesn't wiggle much. You know what I mean, in a, in a public hearing sense, I mean, the public hearing sense is really. Through my experience, ninety-nine percent of it is talking with the town boards, is the public hearings, that those are the folks that are gonna have. You know, feedback that's, that is. You know, moves that needle tremendously, um, not saying that public person couldn't, but I'm just saying historically, it's all about the town government. So, um.
My, my calendar is wide open, uh. At the very least I can do, asking. Uh, more from you people in your evenings, et cetera, is, is be flexible in, uh. Schedule.
Just seems to me that if. Okay, suppose we had a, suppose we had another meeting the, the last day of February.
Yep.
We wouldn't know anything more.
That's true.
So. It's not clear to me that we would. Have a whole lot to do that was anything different than what we're doing right now, um. We have been in this situation in past years where we have gone to the select board. Not for the public hearing, but for a select board hearing. Okay, which has been so common, but. Um. There's sort of a problem with that, because you're sort of a little bit late in the process, and I think, you know, for example. This meeting tonight is much more useful, and coming to you when we've sort of really already got. You know, the, the numbers set for, you know, what's gonna be the public hearing, and we have to do the. You know, we get our practice time doing the song and dance with your board. And then we have a public hearing that basically nobody's at, and it's all sort of. Seems sort of not the best way to do business, um. I think tonight has been very useful, I think, you know, I mean, I. With me, I'd say. Here's your number right now. Okay, put it in the spreadsheet. Okay? That'll show you how big the, you know, how big that part of the problem. Okay? We should go ahead and have our meeting, have our hearing on the fourteenth, which isn't that much time for you to go ahead and start the process of scheduling it. We couldn't have it much earlier, I don't see any reason to have the public hearing later, because we gotta have a public hearing, but we can still make changes after the public hearing. Correct? So it's not like we have the public hearing and whatever we present.
Yeah, the question is, is the law or the.
Things happen, I mean, things happen, we come, I mean, suppose we have the public hearing, and yeah, okay. Well, we, we, but then the word comes back from select board, you know, we, we can't afford this until you cut, you know, fifty grand off the budget.
I think you can reduce the budget if you're gonna measure it and increase it.
Right, and we'd be in a position that we would, that would be okay, because we would be, you know, if we started the position where we are right now.
We wouldn't be looking to go up.
I don't think anybody's looking to go up.
We don't.
Yeah.
Right, you know, and the question is. You know. Whether and how much we might have to go in the other direction, but we could still go ahead and have the public hearing. Okay, uh, and then the question is, do we. You know, wh- wh- what do we do as far as our normal presentation to the select board? Okay, with you, if, you know, where we are right now, which is what you've gotten, okay, we had actually a good discussion. Um, and so I would say, on that. You know, it's almost like we need to have a little flexibility and say. We're gonna keep in touch, and we're probably gonna be sitting down and talking through the same sort of stuff when we've got more pieces of the puzzle. And see, and, you know, how bad the situation is, or what sort of. Strategy we might have in terms of what we wanna present to the town, what some numbers we wanna use there, but, um. You know, and whether we wanna have that meeting. Let's say, you know, at, at town offices next time instead of here, um, if you wish, or we could do it the same night we have the public hearing. And if we could get, you know, maybe, maybe, I mean, this to me is like. Great, sitting here, you know, we got two out of three of you, and we got Jeff here and so on, and that's, uh. It's really useful, and, and maybe just we have the public hearing, and, you know, we can have it right here, the same situation, and have a good discussion with you all as part of that hearing, and. Okay, what are we really gonna do? And then we vote our budget, and then maybe we voted exactly what we got here, or maybe at that point. You all have done some, you know, number crunching and come up with, you know, some alternatives, and who knows, but, uh, um. You know, so that's sort of what I think would make more, so I don't see any, I don't think we're gonna accomplish, we have a meeting in late February.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying, we'll be, that's the more information that's arriving in the first week of March.
Yeah, but even that, it's. I think we just ought to schedule, you know, do the public hearing, and we gotta schedule and actually combine right at that moment our get together with the select board, so you're not. You're not also coming over to sit in the select board meeting to give the same song and dance now, you know, we've all been through and. So on, and it was, it just, that to me, it's a, it's a more reasonable way of doing it.
So you're saying have the public hearing. And then have a separate meeting to vote the budget?
No, have the public meeting. Have the public hearing. Do it in a way, so whether we do it here or at town hall, okay, with the select board, you know, presence. Okay, and whatever discussion we wanna have after that, or prior to it, whatever, about. You know, we may have discussions actually leading up to it that say, okay, we're gonna, you know, talk about a little, I don't know what, okay? That's still, you know, there's a lot here that. It's already worked out, but I think that, we're not, we're not. We're not having a couple of meetings to, you know, with the same cast of characters and just replaying the tape. It's like a. But I don't, I mean, you guys, you don't know where we're gonna end up. You know, and you're not saying, you're not able to say at this point, gee, if you take that position off of there and cut twenty thousand off of the extra money for expenses. Then that number will fly, because you've got no idea what the big, the big picture is. Okay, but, um, I still think this is a really useful meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, uh. But I don't, I don't see a need to go through two times, like it's been the practice. Of, you know, basically present the budget. So on, and then we sit down and we vote it without having made a single change because of all that. Stuff, and it's sort of like, well, why do we do, you know, you've said that before. Why do we do this?
Yeah, I'm just sort of missing the piece where we vote on the budget, we don't have to vote the night of the public.
We don't have to, but we certainly can, and maybe it become obvious, yeah, this is what we wanna vote, and maybe, well, we gotta schedule another meeting in the next week, the. You know, because really there gotta be some serious things we gotta talk about. Don't know. Don't know. Part of that depends on, you know, a large part of it depends on what sort of numbers the towns ending up with, and, and what. You know, these guys' opinion is, is the, what sort of overall budget we wanna present to the town. We don't know right now. Some of that, you know, that's, we're part of a. Group here, we're not, I mean, we're not just sort of, okay, we're gonna present our budget, there it is, and you deal with whatever. None, because we gotta have a way to figure this out for the whole town, with all of us who work, you know. Trying to do stuff for the town and, 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 and so on, working together, so.
So it sounds like procedurally we could vote a budget on the fourteenth at the public hearing, is that what I'm hearing?
Typically that is what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you, you have it, you, that during the public hearing, you voted at the meeting following. We, we open a public here, we close a public hearing, and then we have the regular business.
Right, but just. Because of the timing with things like, you know, the, with cherry sheets are coming out and so on. You know, it's imagine if we were last year and we said, okay, we're gonna have the public hearing and, and vote on a budget in the mid, middle of February. You know, because it's not sort of, you know, we're, we're even beginning of February, and it's like. You know, I, I can very much see, we have the public hearing, and then we have a bunch of discussion, and then, well, maybe we're ready to vote, maybe it's like, okay, we got to go. You know, we.
We may or may not.
Plan B, Plan B really needs to be worked out, and let's have a meeting next week, same time, and then we'll vote on it.
Worst, worst case, we have to have a separate meeting afterwards.
After, but I think it's much more useful to have one after the public hearing. Get the public hearing done. Then you're not so constrained, cause anytime you mess with the public hearing, you got two and a half weeks' notice, so.
And we'll have more information.
Yeah. But I'm just, I'm just talking about. And there's, you know, if you're.
That, that works, that, that's fine, but that's. That's fine by me, I was, uh, the suggestion I was having was just, was to move it later to have. More time with the accurate numbers of, Frontier will have its budget by the eighth of March. Cause it has to have it by, by law by the eleventh of March. And so. That's what they gave themselves, two day buffer, in case they'd have another meeting on the tenth, but, um. So then we also know what the, what the assessment is to town for Frontier, so now we have all the, of all those numbers that. They are gonna need, um, to talk about, you know, the school's percentage, at the same time, they're gonna get the cherry sheets at the same time. They're gonna be working the cherry seats when Frontier's working their budget that week, and so, you know, the fourteenth is fine, if we wanna go in with a, with a higher. Not that I'm saying higher, but the, was relatively a high budget number at the public hearing. And as long as we, everybody's on the same page with that, it's.
I mean, you guys, I think, that's the reasonable. And I just, you know, I, I just wanna. Do it so that when you're, when you're not in a meeting, you're all as participants, not just sitting there being told, you know. Here it is, go through the whole thing again, don't, that's way more useful.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, I'm all about, I mean, listen, you guys talked about this. It's just be casual, we talked about nine, one more time before the public hearings.
Yeah.
So such as the public hearing, and then have our vision, um, there is, I, I would assume that the tech school will have their numbers supposed to run eighth also, would that be a good assumption? I mean, I know they're.
So I have no, I have no idea when they usually send you the numbers.
Okay.
Um, they must have the same, I would assume they have the same rule, they take it anyway, with forty-five days out for your town meeting. Which they probably haven't, they're probably even before us, because. They're given four towns, and so whoever has the first town meeting. Is Deerfield really the first town meeting in all Franklin County? It's possible. It is really, but, um. So I get, I bet you you'll have those numbers at the same time. Um, I can send Rick a note and let you know. Rick Martin, Superintendent of Franklin County.
Yeah, man, I don't see it making sense to try to, you know, have the budget until we have, at the very least, the numbers from Frontier and from the tech school. Cause I mean, it was gonna be wildly different than we think they're gonna be, and have changes in the conversation a bunch from later. So I, I'm, I'm Peter on the, on the fourteenth meeting. Public hearing. Or if we can vote on a break, if not, then.
Gee. Alright, anymore on the budget?
So the three point three million dollars, that includes transportation, right?
Yes.
Um, and then, this is just me, so I'll throw it out there, I like thinking about hard questions that I might have to answer. So I'll let you know what my hard question would be, which is, enrollment's been going down for five years and. And I know every, the cost of everything is coming up, there is an answer for it, but it's just looking at this that was my initial reaction.
So, where's the?
Yeah, I, I'm just, so that you could, I, and I know that there's an answer for it, but I'd rather. I'd rather you be prepared than surprised if it happens in this left board meeting or here or in the town meeting.
So the hard question too, it's that, what, I, but I'm seeing this as what it's coming down to is the adjustment council position. As eliminating the adjustment counselor, the respective adjustment council position, which are. Uh, are increased to in the area of four percent, which I think is completely reasonable, historically a reasonable ask. I, I look at it with the, not necessarily the drop in attendance, but it's the class sizes, and. I think smaller class sizes provide better opportunity. To address student needs immediately rather than having, I think the larger class sizes you have. Immediately, immediately means you have to have those adjustment council positions, so when. We talk about adding the adjustment counselor and then combining classes to get nineteen or twenty, I'm like, well, that's still, well, you have to have adjustment conferences, if you can get classes to ten, you can deal with it right away, so. That's, that's where I'm stuck at, and that, and, and for me, if I like, I gotta eliminate, and those combined classes, those are limiting people's jobs. That's, that's the real thing, and I mean, for me, I would rather. Eliminate the, the job of the, that. Somebody doesn't have yet, than to eliminate the position that somebody actually has.
Well, uh, uh, you make a good point.
But I would also like to bring this to the town, because there's no doubt that student needs are higher than ever before. And I see it all the time, and it's, it's up to the town, you know, yeah, we can eliminate this position. That's meeting the needs of your children. Do you wanna pay for it? And the, the two and a half percent, I can't stand, because it's completely arbitrary number. It gutted education when I was in school, I, I mean, remember when I went through. And there's been this concept now that two and a half percent. Is proper budget. That if you go above two and a half percent, you've done something wrong. And that's, there's, it, it's, it's totally false, you said, I don't know who's getting a ten percent. Then a, a increase, somebody is. It's not really anybody around here, but costs are skyrocketing everywhere. But we can't, we can't just raise it as well, uh, two and a half percent is about transparency, it's, it's actually letting the town know what it actually costs. To fund the entire town, it's not that something has, that has happened wrong, it's that this is actually what it costs. I also feel that in the past, anytime that there's been a two and a half override. The message has been because of the school. And I don't, I hope that would not get the message, because I think even trying to. Like you said, pro- provide lean budgets over the years, it's, everybody's coming in asking for more, it's, it's, it's about the town, not just the school.
Well, true, and you go a whole point there, I mean. The only reason we would wanna have the school be, not front and center, but, but in, but it, part of the cabal that we're coming asking for is because. The school brings support that other, perhaps, you know.
It is the biggest.
Ask for support for the W, when this road looked great in town, potholes are down, and, you know, culprits look good. That's a real hard ask, if you're gonna say that we need more money to the town, or because we need a new. Dump truck, if you need a dump truck, um, it's easier to get support through the school, because. There are more people in town that have a best interest in the school than any other particular department in town. Not to say that they can go and throw the school under the bus every time you do an override, because it's a convenient choice, but just, that is part of consideration is, you know. I'd like to have it be a little bit of everybody, you know, school. Police fire, you know, we have people in town who are, are, are big, you know, proponents of the police department, great. We'll, 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 you know, we'll, uh. Look to them for support there also, um, and, and back to what you said earlier about the, the position, um. You know, the position is not just about students, it's also about supporting teachers, it's also about making the teachers more comfortable in their jobs, and. You improve the quality of the teachers' lives, you improve the quality of the education they're allowed, they're able to provide. Um, and I do think if it came down to, to be cupped position for a classroom teacher. And add this decision or not, I don't know that we're making the teachers' lives easier or better. By making larger class sizes in order to provide a position, and, and again, I'd love to do both, but at the end of the day. Um, I mean, it'd be lovely if these numbers were sixteen kids in all the classes, and then there was that one class that just. You know, you know, that is one, you know, one of these grades that we could actually split up and not have to, it, it's just because so across the board, it's hard to look at that and say. There isn't any good year, um, that's why, one of the reasons why I brought up the idea of maybe doing like a, a third, fourth, three classrooms between third and fourth, because then you end up getting. Who did that in cheap fervor, those grownups that are, you know, um, because the way the numbers work, you, you couldn't find another way to do it, is that ideal? No. Um, and so I, I think I'm kind of, you want the, if it came down to either having to come. Somebody who's already part of the, who's. Who's mid-family, who has a job, who, you know, whose coworkers will miss them versus adding a position. That would be a hard second one, hopefully we don't have to make that decision, hopefully we're able to find a way to do both, but. That may not be in the cards, so.
Yeah, and, and just to address, uh, something that Jeff's questioning a little bit too, um. I think everyone has been really responsible in talking very conservatively about. Choice and when and if it will rebound, um, we don't know. You know, we know that, that when we've had choice in the past, it's helped to offset some costs, um. We know when we had a crisis where, uh, the schools had to cut a lot of. Supports that we had flight in the opposite direction, and it took a long time to bring people back, so in some ways, uh. Make, having class sizes that are relatively small in a supportive environment. Is a way of at least, uh, opening the door to the possibility of future, uh, choice in. Down the road, even if it's not, you know, this year.
Do you think we're about set on this then?
I think so. Alright, uh, let's see, review and approve the minutes.
You guys can stick around, buddy.
Yeah, you guys wanna close your meeting?
Sure, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move you there. I'll take it myself. Bye. Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
We did get a G for flag. And none of the other towns got a bumper D, so if you could just.
Change it to the flag.
Right on it?
Yes.
Good night.
Thank you, thanks. Motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah. All in favor?
Yes.
Alright.
Five oh.
Let's see, financial statements, sign warrants.
So I emailed you the expense reports, there's no uh new major expenses to discuss. Since we last met, that's sort of the theme right now, where everything is status quo, which is great. Um, we signed or you signed twenty warrants electronically totaling a hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, I'm happy to take questions about these. Have any, um, otherwise, you know, twenty-three budget is on par. As planned. Nothing new there. I think the only thing that, you know, I think we talked about this last time, maybe where. Ben and Bill have been working on a deferred maintenance list, so, you know, we're in conversation on how to start the tackle of those pieces. I think major.
Onto the principal's report.
Great, uh, so I'll lighten the mood a little bit with loaves of love, uh, the King Arthur Baking Company. Um, swung by Sunderland Elementary School in um mid-January. They had an outreach program for students in grades four through twelve. Where they teach the students in a um a hands-on live assignment to make dough from scratch. And so each uh student left, uh, in grades four through six with a goodie bag of um. Couple bags of uh dough, some yeast, and directions on how to make bread. And uh students were asked to keep one loaf for them and their families and then. Return another loaf to SES and we in total donated forty-two to the uh Subway Hinoji. Greenfield, and that uh that was organized by our school counselor, Vicki Palmer. And then um in late January, um, the PTO sponsored the Snowflake Dance and it um. Uh, featured a live DJ and uh we saw roughly over, actually between a hundred and a hundred and twenty students. And that uh event was really spirited by, you know, our talented instructional assistants, Joey Chow. So uh kudos to her for that.
Can I just go back to the financial thing, just one, uh, I know Jeff, when he puts together the whole town budget stuff, it's. The school budget is two line items, it's everything but transportation and then transportation. So I don't know if it's clear on this what transportation number is. But if you could send them. You know.
Yeah, when I do, when I give him our final numbers, I break it out for them.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, if you had, if you knew it now, I could say, send it to him because that goes, you know, keep him happy in this way, she. But if you don't have it, it happens.
I can pull it out.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I think my daughter helped do a little security for Snowflake Dance, she she do a good job. Um, I did not attend, I had a prior commitment, but um some students from the National Honor Society. Over at Frontier did um serve as bouncers, yes. And led the chat chat slide.
Outstanding, alright. I didn't hear any public comment, anyone? Got hands up online? In that case, unfinished business, Commonwealth of MA Virtual School and enrollment restrictions.
So we tabled this last time, um. In an effort to get more information. Um, I don't have more information, and so I kinda dropped the ball on that. In the sense I didn't know what I was supposed to get when I was reviewing this today. And so it said get more information, I didn't know what I was supposed to get.
It was whether we'd be responsible for a special education differential.
Um, so I don't have that answer.
Can we find that out if we table for another month? Or I guess next month?
No, I think we have to vote on this by, I think we have to vote on this by March first, I believe that was the date.
Cause it shows up as part of the school choice claim and has an option of whether or not they're a special education student.
My my recollection, my recollection is that we have currently two students. That converts to one point one four percent, oh, we therefore could not vote. Anything that would. You know, cause either of them not to be able to attend. You can't remove anybody, uh, there was uh. Discussion, part of the discussion was as to whether uh putting the limit at two percent, which would allow a total of three students at any one time. Was it leaving a place to put it, um? And I don't know if that's something that we would be. Willing to vote for at this point or not, they do, you know, I don't, I don't know. That was sort of my thought.
I think it's reasonable to vote in a limit, um, my concern is that, um, this is, this is. We have families with medical disabilities for whom the pandemic is an ongoing. Serious grave concern and that having a publicly funded, fully remote option could become. The best thing for a family in order to have all of their family members stay safe. So I would like us to set a cap that is high enough that one more family, you know, if. If their medical circumstances change, because any family could. Become medically, have a member become medically disabled. Um, I'd like us to set it high enough that a family, so more than one child, probably could actually attend. Without getting cut off from that access, from that resource.
So like a number of. Four and a tens and whatever that percentage is, what do you think? I'm just, we could do a.
You have to do a whole number?
Well, we could do whatever the, we could, to make sure, you know, that if the thought is that you want me to make. Four students attend, we can make it to the percentages so that it's. You know, round it up.
I think we had the thing where if we made it three percent, then that would allow up to five students. And whether we were willing to go that, I mean, there is a.
We could do it to a two and a half percent, we we've got our enrollment numbers, we can calculate this.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if you're dealing with the numbers, we can do, we can, we can divert that to the percentage based on. What is that?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve a limit. A limit of four students. With the administration to figure out what percentage uh would be required to be submitted so that that would be.
And it has to be a round number, Ken will round up.
That's right.
Second, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Alright, opposed, unanimous, alright.
They already forgot, don't get old.
A cap of a total of four students.
It's a lot of four students, okay. That's where I thought, but I just suddenly.
New business, school choice participation vote.
So, um, my my understanding is that the school committee votes to either say, yes, we are a school choice. School, um, or no, not to accept school choice, right? As opposed to the number of students per grade level.
They can cap students in grade level, that was a modification from my. From my first year when we were talking about that, they can, but go on, please.
Okay, so, um, so in the sheet we shared with the school committee. We're um recommending greater than one student um for each grade level. And um that allows, even if we do not have any applications, if an in-town current resident. Um, moves out, the family still wants to have that student continue at SES, that's not like it's creating a new space. Um, so each each opening for K through six is greater than one. At this time, as of today, we have four applications, two in kindergarten. Um, one in second grade and one in sixth grade for next year.
So a motion would seem to be needed that just said that we approve. The school's participation in school choice for the twenty-twenty-three slash twenty-four school year.
Any further discussions? Alright, all in favor?
Can I bring up a piece of new business that does not require a vote?
Sure, so I was asked to bring this up to.
Principal Ben, um. That the Sunderland Fire Department is celebrating their ninetieth birthday this year. And they will be, they are having a sort of birthday party on April twenty-nine at the Public Safety Complex. And it's gonna be opened up, there's gonna be chili cook-off. Fire, bonfire, they're gonna have a whole festival event. They bought a new truck about a year and a half ago and they wanna name their truck and there's gonna be a vote for naming the truck. They would like the elementary school kids to come up with the possible names that to vote on, but they're asking is. Each grade PK, pre-K through six. To choose a name, to submit a name, and then I I don't know whether it's the library here, the library in town to take submissions. From children who are not, children in town are not attending SES, okay, so that they would come up with a possible eight submissions. And then at the celebration, they would have a vote there and then that's what the truck would be named. They didn't, they didn't want it to be a burden on the teachers, but they wanted it. It would be fun, the kids would be happy.
Yeah, I think school commission should be able to submit one. What do we got early on?
Ninety birthday of the Sunderland Fire Department.
We name it after Mr. B, every time the truck goes by.
I don't know, six.
I still see the bread people like pulling out and it's like a fog of flour coming out the back as they drive away. The King Arthur people. Not like that, is it?
That was the image you had.
White flour coming out, they drive away and it's like smoked people.
Yeah, made for a messy bus ride.
Any uh committees?
The town capital committee meets every couple of weeks now and we're just. Progression through the normal stuff and the school stuff is on there and. You know, it was great, we actually had a discussion about the other thing here, it feels like. It was, that needed to get moved and so that was excellent. Um, yeah, we got good, you know, we got. We we got good relations with the select board and that, not the case where that really helps and what, you know. You were working with Jeff and Ben for getting the whole playground done and. Or if, you know, something like that is really awesome for. Everything ends up properly done, so, thank you.
Alright, superintendent's report.
Yeah, just some quick updates, the equity audit that's coming, the twenty-fifth, twenty-second, um, Jen will be sending out a sign up if folks want to be. Part of the interviews. If you also, she'll put this in the note, but if you can't make this, it's during the day. Um, on Monday or Tuesday. If you can't make one of those, you could also go to the evening, um, parent one and just be interviewed. Go into the general with the parents and just be a, uh, yeah, a school community interview then, so that that sign up's coming out. Probably tomorrow. You got it today, so she's already on it, it works quicker than I imagined, um, so that's good, um, the other thing is the, um. The superintendency Agreement Committee, um, I right now have submitted that to the attorney. The attorney was kind of looking it over and he wants to talk with the state about it because the state has to approve any, um. Any union contract, uh, unionizations and contracts, um. And the fact that we didn't fix the Union Thirty-Eight problem with that, we've created a procedure. And how to govern the superintendent, kind of deal out a higher fire, indiscipline, um, and so forth, and how the process would work with the. Five groups or five schools, um, we have no real clear language, we just have historic. Um, so we kinda went that route, and when I handed it to him, he said, well, you still don't have a union agreement. To fall back on, and I'm not sure the state's gonna support this, so he actually has set up a meeting with the state. Um, and several of those people to discuss our situation and what we should be doing, so I don't know. If it's gonna make us take a step back, um, and I'm worried about that. The process that we came up with was pretty good, at least there was a process there, um, so, anyway.
We formed a union without having a union agreement?
No, there's a union agreement, um, but nobody complained it. In the state, doesn't collect them apparently, they collect regional agreements but not union agreements, cause. Union agreements, you know, were way back when they're, you know.
And there's how many of them? Not very many.
Not many, so, uh, well, there's a lot of them have dissolved and become region agreements, you know, um, so, and this is. So if we go back and do a union agreement. To make it even more complicated, he was like, he was looking at it and he said, well, frontier shouldn't have a vote. As part of your agreement because you have a union agreement in front, and so it got very complicated very quickly. Where I was like, oh boy, if this goes back, it's gonna be one of those politically, very heavy politically driven things of where the power lies. Um, so he said, let me go talk to the state, see what they recommend we do.
Try and do something good.
Try to do something good and only causing all problems, and then that goes right back to what Phil said. I do wanna agree with him on that, so, yeah, so the. Mess continues, but, um. We'll see what happens. The document that we did come up with, um, that we anyway present, um, did kind of have steps on like, you know, if I was to. To leave and and somebody else would take over and there was disagreements between towns about who the next superintendent would be, it kind of spells out the process of how to do that. Um, which I thought was really important to have, so. Hopefully, we'll see where that goes, and there probably still be a lot of discussion on those decisions there. In, while I was in that meeting, um, Ken and Bob were in that and they both said, can we move the superintendent, superintendent evaluation up? Right now, we've been had the chair of the school of Frontier and the chair of thirty-eight, um. Which probably had to be re-nominated at, uh, the thirty-eight probably should be revoked at the spring joint meeting. But can we move that up so that we get your your evaluation done at for the joint meeting? So I'm in the process of putting together the evaluation template that we used in the past to send that out.
You don't need to do one this year. After your first three years, we can go to every other year.
That would be great.
Save you from putting in more this year, we don't have to do it.
Wow. I I can look into that, um.
I've attended several M A S, M A S C webs, uh, seminars on this.
Yeah.
And I'm quite confident after the first three years, you can go to every other year, just like the teachers can.
Just the teachers. And I guess they have been through, you know, that this is, yeah. Okay, well, alright, I don't know what to do with that.
Call it the two chairs and if they agree, just.
Say, okay, I'll call the two chairs and see if they.
And just do it, don't, you know, have a vote on it, I think, just do it.
Or maybe I can change it to getting someone, just getting feedback, who else would be able to. And then, um, I think the recent equity committee is tomorrow, his third meeting, um, who's involved with that and, um. I can give you an update from that when that's being done, this is kind of weird because you guys, the first meeting, all the other school committees this month fall after that. Um, and then there's another meeting, uh, the equity committee on the twenty-seventh, um, and I'll be giving them an update. So, it's just my quick superintendent's report, but, hey.
Outstanding. All right, uh, in that case.
You done, Bob?
Yeah, yeah, motion to adjourn.
Go for it.
I think it's turn.
You can.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion here.
Snap in.
One further? Thank you all.